Okay, yeah. What I'm just gonna do is appoint Van Medina under the planning, Priscilla Rodriguez, and I would be an ex-official member of the committee to go negotiate. Okay. Well, Estella, I think that our clock is a little bit
Yes.
past, but it's about 4:50.
Okay.
Workshop to begin.
Okay. Let me just read the call.
Sure.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given to the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas. In accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, we'll convene a workshop and executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, October the 4th, 2011, at 4:50 PM, 5:20 PM, and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Lisbon Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop Item A, Discussion Regarding the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation's Fiscal Year 2012 Budget.
Mayor members of the commission, my name is Delina Barrera. I'm the Executive Director for the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. What I'm going to start with is a little bit of background on BCIC and some of the funding that BCIC has provided over the years since its existence. Again, BCIC is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. It does fund quality-of-life projects. A special election was held back November 6th of 2001, and it was the first of eight propositions to create a 4B corporation, which are now called Type B corporations. Again, this is the actual proposition that was on the ballot, which is, shall the City Commission of the City of Brownsville existing Section 4(a) sales use tax for development of new and expanded business enterprises from the rate of one-half of 1% to the rate of one-quarter of 1%, and concurrently adopt a Section 4(b) sales and use tax at the rate of one-fourth of 1% to undertake projects such as described in Section 4(b) of Article 5190.06, including but not limited to land buildings, equipment, facilities, and improvements included under the definition of project under Section 25190.6. Projects for the promotion of professional amateur athletics and sports, including stadiums, ballparks, auditoriums. Projects related to entertainment, convention, tourist, and exhibit facilities, amphitheater, concert halls, and public park, park facilities, and events. Open space improvements, learning centers, municipal buildings. Those two items have, in subsequent state legislation, been removed, and you can't use funding for learning centers and municipal buildings because, in essence, many cities just basically started building city halls and libraries, and that wasn't the intent of the legislature. There have been other updates to the actual legislation. Museums and related store, restaurant concessions, and automobile parking facilities, and related area transportation facilities, related road streets, and water and sewer facilities, recycling facilities, and projects to promote new or expanded business enterprises, including public safety facilities, streets and roads drainage, and related improvements, demolition of existing structures, and general improvements that are municipally owned, development or redevelopment of closed military bases, development and expansion of affordable housing, as well as any other improvements or facilities that are related to any of the above projects. Projects required for suitable or the development of water supply facilities or the institution of water conservation programs, any other project that the board determines will promote newer expanded business enterprises, and the maintenance and operation expense for any of the above projects. In essence, what the city did at the time when they did do that particular proposition was to use the large, overreaching general language. Again, and the board, currently we have Dr. Goun as the Chair, Dr. Benavides the Vice Chair, Blanca Perez Moreno, Secretary, Hernandez-Garcia, Falway, and Troani. Again, the board does serve, the board is appointed by the City Commission, serves two-year terms for a max of two terms. The mission is basically is funding quality-of-life projects. For this fiscal year, funding, historically what the board has done is put out funding applications to have organizations apply for the funding. For this year, the funding applications were released on September 20th, 2011. I did forward all those applications to any and all previous applicants and/or anybody else who throughout the year has asked about applications. We also have it on the website. The applications are due December 19th, 2011. Again, for the prior year, the, in essence, the funding application, the board does review the funding application. They also reviewed the guidelines. Last year, they released it on September 23rd, 2010. They were due on December 15th. The board reviews the applications for merit and reasonable of costs, applications that are recommended for funding. The law requires for us to go on ahead and have a public hearing, and then the applications are brought to City Commission for approval. And I'll just go through this quite quickly. It was in your packet, but just so that the commission could have an idea of the various, and this is by organization that they have, that BCIC has funded in the past, from the Boys and Girls Club of $140,000, Brownsville Botanical Gardens, $97,000, the Community Foundation, $58,000 for the Recaca de la Palma Battlefield Projects, Brownsville Historical Association, $238,584. And again, those are a series of projects over the years. The Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, $1.4 million. That was toward the initial construction of that building. The Tennis Association, 64114, that's also been for a couple of different projects. Camille Players, $158,000, also for several projects. Children's Museum, $1 million, that was for the exhibits and furnishings when it was first being built. In the City of Brownsville, there's also been various projects. The bicycle projects, $70,000, that was this past year. The bus, $225,000, again, a couple of projects which helped meet the local match for them for the federal funding. Historical Battlefield Trail, those were the signal lights, the "Walk Don't Walk" along the trail. That was done in conjunction with a match with the, also with BISD. The COB Pretus-Cassel Trail, $100,000, the fire department for the restoration of the truck, the health department, again, several different projects. Heritage Department, that's one that they're wrapping up, which is the architectural design guidelines for the downtown, for the city. The COB Market Square Rehab, that's an upcoming project. Parks Department, again, this is accumulation of various projects throughout the city parks to improve from, to improve existing parks, to maintenance, maintenance to equipment, and even the construction, the maintenance building. The Planning Department for the comprehensive plan. The CAF Museum has been, it's been a series, and it's been for the roof of that particular building, which is a city building. Foundation for Brownsville Sports. The Gladys Porter Zoo, again, that's also been a series of various projects over the years. The Gorgas Science Foundation, Historic Brownsville Museum, that's a current project, which is the roofing that's currently being in process. Healthy Communities, also keep Brownsville beautiful. A multipurpose concept. The Palo Alto National Park Committee, Pan American Round Table, Sable Palm, South Texas Film, then the United Brownsville, West Brownsville Little League. Again, so you can see, it's a multitude of different organizations and projects that have been funded over the years by BCIC. Again, our revenue is primarily a quarter cent sales tax. It's based on the future projected revenue from October through September. Historically, for the budget, what we have used is extremely conservative estimates because it being our primary source of revenue and the volatility of the sales tax revenue, we've been extremely conservative with those funds as far as using what we call a working budget. So from 2004, 2007, we actually used the 2008 budget numbers, 2008 to 2011, we used the 2005 numbers. Now, in fiscal year 2011, they did revise the budget up to 3.6 to be able to add more monies to the project category so that more projects could be funded. And then for this year, the budget that I'm presenting today, they're using basically the revised budget that they did last year, and that revenue is pretty similar to the fiscal year 2006 actual revenue. Again, the way that it works, as far as sales tax revenue, there's basically a two-month lapse between when the monies are actually generated and when they end up inside the account. For the fiscal year 2012, projects reimbursements would actually begin in October of 2012. Again, and then just to give a little bit of background here, you can see the monthly sales tax history. So you have fiscal year 2012, they started generating the revenue at mid-year, so for the first fiscal year of funding, which was 2003, they actually had two years, about a year and a half of revenue to be able to use at that point in time. And then this also shows you, and these are generated by the Finance Department here at the City of Brownsville. This is the sales tax comparison, and these are based on actual revenues, and these projections are what the Finance Department has put together. So we will be a little bit above the actual projected revenue for fiscal year 2011. So in essence, just kind of giving you a comparison here. And again, as I stated earlier, we have been using, along the lines, we've been using more a very, a working budget, a conservative budget for fiscal year 2010, 3.3, 2011, 3.3, and then fiscal year 2012. As I noted earlier, though, the 2011 budget was revised in order to be able to provide more funding for projects. And what you will also notice for this year, the BCIC has also added, as part of the administrative expense, is the eCivis, and that's the, that will be under the Grant Department of the City of Brownsville. We have had it for the prior two years. It allows, it's a web search engine that helps you on the front end of grants to be able to identify possible grants for different projects. And that one is, under that particular program, it is also made available to many of the community-based organizations, nonprofit organizations to use. And then if we look at the project breakdown, again, you'll see that that was the revised budget on 2011 where they went ahead and increased the application funding to 660,500, and that, again, is what is being proposed for fiscal year 2012. And then the other amounts, the debt service, the City of Brownsville amount that's being paid, and the other amounts, including the maintenance contract. So, broken down again for 2012, we're looking at, on the sports park maintenance costs, it's, what is projected to cost is about $700,974. The FY fiscal year 2011 budget is $550,000. It's reduced by the amount, by the amount of revenues that are generated at the sports park. So that's what accounts for the difference for the sports park maintenance costs. Again, this is just a pie chart showing the breakdown as far as administrative costs, the amount of going into contingency, and then projects as a whole. So this last sheet, and this is the sheet that, again, you have it both in your packet as far as the workshop and also as the action item, is what the board is recommending for the budget for fiscal year 2012. What you will note at the very bottom, because that was a question that was raised by the board, is that we do have, in essence, monies that are there in BCIC. One of the reasons that we keep that amount of money is because, in essence, again, we're working off projected revenues, so we need to have money in the bank to start the year to be able to pay for the expenses that come up. Questions or comments?
I have a little question.
Yes.
Okay. Of the estimated $3.2 million for fiscal year 2012 budget, approximately $2.6 million is earmarked for the sports park. How long can we anticipate that to be? When can we expect some of those monies to free up for other citywide projects?
Okay. What we have is, if you look at the, let me move that forward. Oops. Okay. What you will notice in this particular item is the reimbursement that we have for the $371,300, that one will clear out, and that's the first one that'll clear out, which is a 10-year debt on February 15th of 2018. So that will be the first one, and that's the amount that we're giving for the city for a CO. And larger debt service, which is the $1.4 million, will have some of it dropping off on August 15th of '24, and then the other one of August 15th of '27. The $170 will be in 15 years. So that's what you're looking for, you're looking at is timeline. The maintenance contract, of course, is dependent on how much revenue the sports park is able to generate, and then we're able to apply toward the maintenance of that particular park.
Have we worked towards trying to solicit some sponsorships for the park?
That's one of the things that the board was quite active in, in, again, the, for the maintenance of the sports park, the BCIC has a contract with the City of Brownsville to maintain the park, and so that's one of the things that this year the board was very active in trying to work with the City of Brownsville and impress on them the importance of, again, trying to generate more revenues by becoming more effective in concession revenue generation, and also in trying to, as you stated, trying to get more sponsorships. One of the concerns is that, or one of the concerns expressed is that some money is better than no money, so that to be more diligent about working on getting more sponsorships. So, yes.
Commissioner, let me just enlighten you just a little bit, if I may. I think, Doctor, I was at your last meeting, and one of the things that, and I think you have a genuine concern, and a real, I think we have a situation that needs to be looked at even harder than what we're doing right now. But one of the things is that this group takes a lot of time dealing with the sports parks issues, so they don't have time to do, and poor Dr. Delina doesn't have a chance to do some of the grant writing that probably needs to be done. So, at least I was very heartened by the last meeting that I attended where they understand that the emphasis has to be shifted away from just sort of putting out fires or maintaining the sports park and watching how much is really being, it's costing us, okay? So I anticipate, Doctor, that, and what I would like to suggest to y'all, is in the near future, maybe three months from now, come back and if you would give us an updated progress report as to how those things are occurring. In other words, we have to kind of refocus our energies into revenue share, making revenues happen.
Yeah.
Because we just got ourselves in a lot of debt, and it's taking a lot of money out.
Well, not only that, there was a time when BCIC used to fund city projects, particularly the Parks Department would receive about $1.5 million. And now that that money is no longer being received by them, where do you think it's coming from?
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, no, and I understand it fully. That's why I think, Doctor, has been really, you know, working hard. I mean, I think, I think what happens is you, we got caught in situations, like anything else, that a lot of our resources are going into that particular project, and we're going to have to figure out how to reconfigure all that with everybody's help, I think, and, but don't let up the gas on this one. I mean, we have to, we have to do something here.
And Commissioner, I think the other emphasis also is that the parks start focusing on trying to bring more events or activities that are coming from, that will bring people from outside the area, as was intended to for this particular park, so that we have external revenue coming from outside, because we don't need to recirculate our own monies here in Brownsville, but bring external monies from other places throughout the state and the country through the projects, I mean, to try to focus more on generating activities and events that will bring people from a further distance so that they can spend money here.
I agree, and I would like to see the sports park staff come before us and provide us with that kind of report, as opposed to the CVB coming here and saying, you know, I know that they help, but ultimately, sports park staff is responsible for doing that. I think that's a good point.
Doctor, could you tell, how big is, for the purpose of general knowledge, how big is the sports park, and how much other land do you have available for additional activities?
The sports park is 150 acres. The acres that has not been developed specifically for amenities is about 50 acres. However, within that 50 acres, what, the decision was made because it would be more cost-effective, is that, in essence, the infrastructure, most of the underground things are already there and ready for hookup, so that when whatever was decided should go into that additional 50 acres, we would be able to move quickly.
Okay, so we've got 150 acres, 100 of which we're utilizing and 50 which are out there.
Approximately, yes, sir.
That are prepped to go.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, and unfortunately, what happened when I was chair at the time that this happened, that's when prices tripled. I mean, we went, we went where our budgets, I mean, the cost of cement, the cost of asphalt, the cost of tubing, everything that we needed to put in the infrastructure, tripled. I mean, literally, HNTB and Spoglass tried as best they could and held the best prices that they could, but there was just some items where we just, it was just impossible, and we were already into construction, and it was do or don't, and we had to do.
No, no, no.
With that in mind, we should have voted otherwise when it came before us. And I voted against it, and you voted?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Any pass.
Well, we'll deal with the issue as it is. Again, we've got a certain size of the pie. We'll have to increase the pie and the revenues so that we can kind of address the issue, but it's definitely an issue that needs to be followed, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you very much. Stephanie, I think you're up next. Estella, what's?
Workshop Item B, the Office of Grant Management Report for All Grant-Related Activities in Fiscal Year 2011.
Good evening, members of the commission. Mayor, we're here today to give our progress report, or semi-annual progress report. Just want to give an update. We've come a long way since our last meeting, so, okay. Well, now, we are a staff of three. We're no longer just two grant writers. We actually have an administrative assistant, a fiscal tech-three, so that really helps with processing the grants, organizing the grant management altogether. She's a lifesaver, so we're grateful for that.
Now that you're a staff of three.
Well, as of January 18th of this year, we were relocated, and we are now the Office of Grant Management located at City Plaza, second floor. We are a division of the City Manager's Office, and we report directly to Mr. Kabler. Our mission as the Office of Grant Management is, we are committed to effectively identify, secure, and manage grant funding that will promote the increased quality of life for the Brownsville community. We have many goals and objectives, but these are specific ones, these are general ones. We want to identify funding opportunities, develop compelling grant applications to secure grant funding, ensure compliance with grant requirements, and provide grant-related guidance, services, support, and resources to city departments. We've actually come a long way. We're working with, first off, we're working with MIS to develop a grants database, which should be up and running pretty soon. We're putting some tweaks on it today, and our main object, we want to be transparent to the public and other city departments, and obviously the commission, and let everyone know what we're working on, what the progress is, and how we're managing those grants as compliance is obviously very important. So with this database, we'll be able to access a list of all the grants from the past five, 10 years. We'll be able to see how we're moving along, our progress so far. We're 50% complete, 75% complete, who's involved, the amount of the grant, what agency funded us. So we're working on that, and that should be available pretty soon. In addition to that, we're also utilizing social media. We just put up our Facebook page. It's Grants Department, if you want to look for us. And there, we'll be putting pictures of some of the projects, some of our infrastructure projects throughout the city, some updates on how things are going, what grants are pending, whatnot. We've developed some policies and procedures just to kind of get our department going. We're also going to work on a master plan, just like every other department or division who has a master plan. We want to do that as well, and not only do we write grants and report on grants and worry about compliance, but a long time ago, when we first came on in 2009, we had a lot of nonprofits and other community organizations come and knock on our door and ask for some assistance. And as much as we'd like to help write all of the grants, we obviously don't have the time to do that, so we formed the Grant Writers Consortium. And occasionally, we'll send out grant updates, grant tips, things like that, and so we want to continue that. And part of that plan, part of our master plan, is to schedule some of those workshops in. We also have a quarterly newsletter that I think everyone got a hold of. We're going to make those available at the libraries and at the airports, so the public has access of what we're doing as well. And again, please take a look at our Facebook page. These are some of the grants that were awarded in fiscal year 2011. The Restoring Brownsville History, Delina mentioned that one. That one is from a BCIC grant. That is for the repair, we cannot repair the roof. We are now replacing the roof. Connect to Brownsville, this is for the Brownsville Public Library. This is equipment where you'll be able to audio conference from one library to the other. The Apache Foundation Award is 150 trees that are going to be planted at this Brownsville sports park. And the Lower Rio Grande Valley Mobile Coastal Management Grant, this is a grant that was awarded about two weeks ago, $100,000 for the facilities at Montevilla Park. And the Brownsville Multipurpose Hangar Project, that is the EDA Hangar Project at the airport that we recently funded. So in total, for fiscal year 2011, we have $1,328,000. Now, I'm going to bring John Rodriguez aboard. He's our grant manager, and he's going to come and tell you about some of the grants that we have in the process, hopefully to get funded pretty soon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, City Administration Committee. These are the grants that we have pending. Pretty much all of them were written during fiscal year 2011. Obviously, we're now in fiscal year 2012, so we're hoping to hear something soon from each one of them, actually. Better Cleaner Brownsville, that's through the Land Office for the State of Texas, and that would actually provide outreach as far as storm drains, helping them, keep them clean, also trash rubbish removal throughout the City of Brownsville. We're also looking at the Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant. We're part of the Rio-South Texas Regional Planning Consortium if we are under the due diligence process, which means that we, it looks very favorable for the committee to, consortium to get awarded this grant. If we are awarded this grant, we would receive consulting help, and we, as in the region, Idalgo County and Cameron Counties are involved. There's numerous agencies, nonprofits that are involved in this consortium, municipalities throughout the region. And basically, we would work on streamlining all sustainable efforts throughout the valley. For example, GIS, the larger cities, McAllen, Brownsville, we have GIS programs that are pretty up to par, whereas some of the smaller communities may not have that capacity. With this grant, we would try to bring everybody up to par. Connecting Brownsville Historical Trails, that's through the National Park Service. This would be technical assistance in the long run. Palo Alto, out in the Los Resinos area, or northern Brownsville area, and the Recaca de la Palma State Park, which is just off Price Road and Perez Line Road, and the historic Fort Brown earthworks. We already have the Heritage Trails Battlefield Trail, and through this efforts, basically, the three would be further connected. The Metro Market through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and this would spotlight our farmer's market, which has received numerous awards and recognition, and also increase transportation efforts via the Brownsville metro system. We're also looking at the Lower Rio Grande Valley Mobile Coastal Effort, and that would be for $100,000. That one, we're also under due diligence. Again, that indicates that we have a very favorable chance of receiving this award. And this would call for the purchase of a mobile lab, And this would call for the purchase of a mobile lab, which would, uh, go throughout the lower southern Cameron County, uh, working with the different school districts, uh, the students of all ages, their parents, the community, and basically this would, uh, further educate and provide outreach to the committee, again, on the importance of maintaining, uh, economic, or I'm sorry, environmental, um, efforts. Uh, the Texas Safe Shelter Initiative through the Department, Texas Department of Emergency Management, we are, uh, under the due diligence process, again, looks very favorable for receiving, uh, up to twenty-three million, four hundred thousand dollars for the construction of nine committee safe shelters throughout the city of Brownsville. And this also includes, uh, one safe shelter at the First Baptist, First Baptist School located off of Boca Chica Boulevard. Grand success we've had, uh, these, the Project Greenlight was written, actually, that was the first grant that Stephanie and the previous grant writer wrote about two years ago or so. Uh, we already completed the first phase, which was retrofitting twenty traffic lights or, uh, traffic signals throughout the city of Brownsville, at the major arterials, Boca Chica, I believe Central Boulevard, uh, and we had some money saved or left over, so we received, uh, the go-ahead from the state to utilize that money and provide that retrofit service for sixty additional traffic signals. Uh, we worked with the Finance Department, I believe PUB, on obtaining these numbers. We're looking at saving the city, uh, approximately five hundred thousand within the next five years. Um, also, the EECBG, City Plaza Landfill, this grant was written before the grant writers came aboard, however, we were, uh, managing the process at City Plaza and at the landfill, the Mason Gas Flare, and we're looking at four hundred thousand potential, uh, profits in the sale of carbon credits. Uh, we're also looking at taking those carbon credits, um, or additional activity and possibly powering the city, uh, you know, so that we won't spend as much money on electrical consumption. And we had some money left over, so now City Hall, the building we're in currently, uh, is also going to receive some, some retrofit, uh, activity. Uh, the Free Play, which was a, uh, grant written between the School of Public Health, uh, University of Texas at Houston, uh, Brownsville Regional Campus, and the city of Brownsville, uh, that's out at the new, uh, Parks and Rec Office off of, uh, Seventh Street. Um, it's a very innovative park system that, uh, empowers the community to, you know, to participate in wellness efforts. And, uh, this figure of a hundred and sixteen that was taken during the spring, where there was effective survey taking, obviously during the summer there was a lot more students, uh, kids were out of school, and so, uh, you know, that number is, is, uh, is not correct. Uh, again, total awarding during fiscal year twenty eleven, one point three two eight million. Uh, we're hoping to receive, uh, almost twenty-five million, uh, during this year, but the grants were written last fiscal year, and so, um, all throughout, we've received six million, five hundred and eight thousand. And I return this to, uh, Stephanie.
So as you can see, we've not only, um, been awarded some grants, but the grants for infrastructure projects and programs, but some of the grants that we've managed, we, we're now saving a tremendous amount of money, especially with energy savings, and, and we're managing it so much that we're able, you know, to work with finance and utilize the remaining funds for additional projects. Now, in addition, as I mentioned earlier, in addition to what we do here in the office, we have formed the Grant Writers Consortium and hold semi-annual, um, workshops where we invite community members, other nonprofits to come, and we'll give grants one-on-one type of training, um, it's a big networking event. Um, we have also participated in United Brownsville Legislative Summit, um, we are also part of the Rio Grande Valley Sustainability Council and the Cities of Service. We are a city of service, we were actually the first city in Texas to become a city of service, and we recently, on September fourteenth, organized a Brownsville Service Workshop in which we, as the city, um, have all come together and will develop a service plan similar to Austin and Houston, and this was a commitment, um, from our mayor as being a member of the Cities of Service Coalition. Other collaboration, John and I try to take part in as many committees and, and we sit on some boards, just so that we can get an idea of what some of our community needs are. It really helps us in the grant writing process and it helps our applications to be more compelling and more effective. And, um, you can contact us here, uh, we're now located on Levy Street. These are individual emails, we are also working with the library to get a general grant management at COB.us email, so if you need to get in touch with us, you can contact us there. Any questions, concerns?
No, Stephanie and John, very good, you guys have done an excellent job. Um, I think, though, that we, we forwarded to you, the Department of Interior has got some, um, preservation technology and training grants.
Okay.
Uh, through the Department of Interior, but they must be submitted prior to October the seventeenth.
Okay.
So you guys are going to have to work real fast and real quick.
Okay.
Uh, but I think that, uh, those are, it's, it's, uh, it's a way of, of trying in our, um, historic preservation efforts, would, might be very, very helpful to us. So if you guys would look at that, um, I think my sender is behind you over there, so in case, uh, you guys don't have the, the website to go to, please do so, okay?
Okay, will do.
Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Estella, I think now we go to executive session?
We have the executive sessions. Item A, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Properties Struck Off From and To Cameron County for itself and Other Taxing Jurisdictions from a Tax Resale Held on March the first, twenty eleven and June seventh, twenty eleven. Executive Session, Item B, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Possible Purchase of Real Property. Executive Session, Item C, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code in Connection with Pending Litigation, styled and numbered BFFA Local 970 versus City of Brownsville, Cause Number 2011-DCL-5738-E.
I move to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Go ahead.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Huh?
Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
Shall we do the pledge of allegiance?
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and individual.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you that you love us right where we're at. And Lord, I, I thank you for this nation that you've been, that you've blessed us with, I thank you for the city of Brownsville. Lord, help each of us living here in Brownsville to, first of all, be honest with you, to be honest with each other, and so that you can lead, guide, and direct us. Lord, I thank you that you've blessed us with these leaders that are here before us today. I ask you to lead and guide each of their decisions that they make in this meeting. Let it be good for the city of Brownsville. Lord, we thank you and praise you for all these things, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 Brad, uh, would you can lead us in a little bit of a prayer? Commissioner Rosegall, her, uh, father is, uh, in very ill, and so I'd like a little prayer on her behalf and her family so that God, God will guide her through these difficult times, okay?
Sure, and what's his name?
Uh, it was Bruno Savalletta, Coach Gus Savalletta, I'm sorry, Gus Savalletta. Coach?
Yes. Father God, we lift up Coach Savalletta to you, and we lift up this family to you. Lord, I ask you to lead and guide them very clearly during this time. Lord, first of all, we'd like you, we'd ask you to heal Coach Savalletta. Direct him, direct those that are taking care of him right now, and most of all, let your will be done in all of this. Let all of us be what we need to be to that family right now, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Brad. Okay, Estella?
Action on items discussed in executive session. Item A, Discussion and Possible Action on the Resolution Numbers 2011-056 through 2011-061, approving the various bids received from the tax resale held on March the first, twenty eleven, and June seventh, twenty eleven, for the properties as listed.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, I'm sorry, who was nay? Samora? Oh, okay.
Motion does not carry.
Item B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Acquisition of the Quito Building as Part of the City of Brownsville's Efforts in Regard to Downtown Revitalization.
Mark, uh, in accordance with our executive session, there will be a, a team, uh, made up of Priscilla Rodriguez, uh, planning, uh, Ben Director, Ben Medina and myself, uh, as well as yourself, uh, to negotiate, uh, and bring it back to the city, uh, at a further time. That would be a motion?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. As far as the mayor's report, all I'd just ask you is to pray for Commissioner Gowan and her family, um, keep her in your prayers and your thoughts. Um, Commissioner Longoria, do you have something?
Did we go to see, did we do something? Do you understand?
Yes, sir.
Here, Rick.
Yes, we're having the, it's coming in. This is a presentation that was given, uh, this past Sunday, two Sundays ago, I'm sorry, at a, at a town hall meeting that I held in, at Good Shepherd Catholic Church, and it was to explain to the residents the problems that we were going through at East Avenue, and the people that were present seemed to be, I don't want to say happy with what was going on, but they were given an explanation that they felt that hadn't been given to them. And I just wanted to briefly go through it to, for those people that might have missed the meeting, or for those that have some kind of a vested interest into this, to be able to understand how long this project is going to last, and in essence, what it is that it's doing. Will you go to the second slide, please? This is covering the Brownsville PUB sanitary sewer overflow projects. Now, these are ERA funds that PUB, uh, applied for. It was very, it was a very aggressive stance that they took, uh, on October fifteenth, the Texas Water, uh, Development Board, uh, announced that PUB was getting one hundred percent of the funding, and the city of Brownsville, or PUB, was funded forty-six million, one hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars of, of one hundred percent of the grant that is to be used for these types of projects that are going on in the city. Next slide. The project will address infiltration and inflow issues in the aged sanitary sewer collections and improvement to the sanitary sewer lift stations in an effort to reduce sanitary sewer overflows. There are portions of the PUB systems that were eighty years old. A lot of the work that had been, that hadn't been done over the years in southmost area, in La Vita, in East Avenue, where we're seeing the work done right now, they're pulling out cave, uh, pipes that are still made out of clay, and some of them, uh, special crews had to be brought in, especially at La Vita, because of asbestos that was found within the material, and it needed to be a special crew to be able to dispose of it. The construction schedules, forty-two point nine million was already spent, and six point five has already been allocated in this fiscal year in two thousand and eleven. There are thirteen projects overall that started in January of two thousand and ten. Two of the projects have already been completed, one of them being the one on Boca Chica and Central Boulevard, and the remaining eleven are scheduled to be completed this year and by early two thousand and twelve, the latest, all thirteen projects should be done. Next slide. The ones that pertain to the presentation that I gave were the Project Seven, which is a southmost wastewater collection system and lift station project, which is going on there on East Avenue. Project Nine, Sewer Lift Station Improvement Projects, and Project Twelve that has already been completed, it was on Lincoln and Grant over by Falk, uh, Middle School and the project area. That project has already been completed and done. Next slide. Project Seven, which is going on right now, it is approximately eleven million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars being spent. Once again, it is by the ERA funds, the ERA grant that was grant, that was given to the PUB. It started on January eighteenth, two thousand and ten, on La Vita, and it has an end date scheduled of March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve. In communication with John Bruzzi, I've been told that they're, so far, they're about thirty-two days ahead of schedule. So, what people needed to understand and what they did not know was that this project had eight, was awarded eight hundred calendar days to be completed. So, tell the contractor to hurry up. I can go tell the contractor to hurry up as much as I want to till I'm blue in the face, he has eight hundred, eight hundred days to be able to complete that project. So, they are within the, the means of their eight hundred days, and they do, like I said, as, as of yet, right now, they are thirty-two days ahead of schedule, and, like I said, this project was awarded eight hundred calendar days. Next slide. The description of this project, it's to replace old Iggy sewer pipes and remove a sewer lift station, resulting in the reduction in odor problems and operations and maintenance costs. The project will replace the sewer lift station and old clay lines in the southmost area of the city. The sewer lift station number eight, located at the corner of La Vita and East Avenue, which is where they're working right now. Lift station number fifty, located at the corner of Esperanza and Elda Drive. No, uh, lift station number sixty, located near the corner of La Posada and Ramada Drive, and they're all being reconstructed. The sewer lift station one fifty-five, located at the corner of Thirtieth and Jennifer, is going to be dismantled, it's going to be discommissioned, and there's going to be two new lift stations added on Southmost Boulevard that are going to be taken away. All of this, it's an unsightly project right now, it's, uh, located on Jennifer, and it is covered with cedar fencing, and it's just, it's been an eyesore for the community for as long as it's been there. And included in this project, there are thirty thousand, eight hundred feet of gravity sewer collection lines of different sizes that are being installed. So, this will be up to par come February, March of two thousand and twelve, this portion of the city will be up to par with lift stations, with sewer lines, with everything, making it compliant and, you know, giving it a better life for the next fifteen, twenty years. Next slide, please. Project Nine, like I stated, was the lift stations. The cost of the lift stations was two million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Once again, it is financed by ERA, and it had a start time of January eighteenth, two thousand and ten, and an end date of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve, giving it seven hundred and seventy-one calendar days, and this is the money that is being spent on replacing those lift stations. A lift station doesn't cost a hundred thousand dollars. You know, lift stations cost, you know, a good three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars per lift station, so, you know, the, for this, for this money, not to have come from the ratepayer, from the citizen of Brownsville, this was, yes, it's taken a long time, but it is giving these portions of the city very much needed infrastructure work, and it's at no cost to the city. Next slide. The project will reduce odor problems, like I said, and it will reduce operations and maintenance costs by rebuilding several, uh, lift stations, and like I said, the ones located, the ones in, in yellow are the ones that affect District One, and they are eighty-three percent, and they will be finished. Uh, the lift station work should be done by November of this year, so the, uh, lift stations are already upon completion. Next slide. And this was just to give an overview of when Project Twelve started, and it did start in January eighteenth of two thousand and ten, and it did conclude last year on November eighteenth. It took three hundred and five calendar days, and the work has been very well kept up, and that's my presentation, thank you. Oh, just Mayor, if I could, real quickly, uh, at the next City Commission meeting, this is Filipino-American, uh, awareness month, but we were not able to get the paperwork in on time, so the Filipino-American, Filipino-American Association will be coming in at the next meeting so we can do the recognition of Filipino-American month.
Thank you, Commissioner, very good report. Commissioner John Guerrell?
Uh, yes, uh, I have a, a brief update on, on also, uh, construction projects going on and improvements in District Four. Uh, can we go to the next slide, please? Okay. Under design, uh, currently we have El Paso Road, uh, West Madison, and Honeydale Road. Uh, these, as I understand, are, are ready to go. The only thing we're coordinating right now is with, uh, PUB, just to make sure they get their work done before the, the streets are paved, um, in order to avoid having, uh, repairs done after they're, they're paved. Uh, the next slide, please. The next slide, please. Okay, this is West Morrison Road out there by Academy. As you can see on, on the picture, on the, the lower picture, that was a groundbreaking ceremony, and since then, we, we've had a lot of progress. Currently, it is about 50% complete. I know right now, it's a big headache right there by, by Academy, going on to, to the expressway and across to Target. But hopefully, by February of, of this following year, we'll, we'll have that complete, and that will alleviate a lot of traffic coming from, from the neighborhoods on Alton Glor over to, to this area by the expressway. It will also create a lot of, of good locations for commercial sites. Next slide, please. Okay, East 7th and Frontage, that's, that's right here downtown, going toward the Frontage Road. I'm sure all of us have been through there, and, and we know there's, there's an issue when you want to turn left going north on the expressway. There, there's a bottleneck there. Now, what the city, our engineering and, and other departments did, is they, they widened the road there where the, the traffic barrels are, and they created another turning lane. That is, I believe, just about complete, so that'll, that'll help alleviate the traffic there on, on East 7th. Next slide, please. Alton Glor Boulevard, that's another, a street with a lot of traffic and, and a lot of issues right now with the construction, being that we have Iturri Elementary there and, and a lot of homes in the area. I got an update from our engineering department and Tech dot. That, if all goes well, should be done before Christmas. It's about 70% complete. And I know the city, our, our traffic department, engineering, we're working closely with, with Iturri Elementary and their principal and B I S D police to try to minimize the, the problems we have in the mornings and, and the time of exit of the children. Next slide, please. A West Brownsville Drainage Project. This is, these are, these pumps pictured here are actually a temporary solution to a problem we have. We have a huge flooding issue there on, on that curve on, on Military. We are having a permanent pump put in that will have, that will turn on as soon as the water reaches a certain level, so we don't have to have someone run out there and turn the pumps on. And that'll, that'll drain out into the U.S. Fish and Wildlife site we have there on Military. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the Elizabeth Heights Drainage Improvement Project. That will provide some flood relief to the areas around Honeydale, Purdue, Hawthorne. That, those drainage improvements will include a, a new detention pond, and that's, that's something those residents have, have needed for a long time, and they're, they're finally getting. Next slide, please. This is off Mexico Boulevard. It's, it's a pump station also, right there by the, the B and M Bridge, close to the railroad overpass. That, if you've driven through there, you know there's a dip, there's a little valley under the overpass, and that always is a flooding issue when, when it rains. So, this is just about complete. They're, they're completing some of the electrical issues. But if I'm not mistaken, it's just a matter of days, that one will be up and running. Next slide, please. Okay, this, this is a project that, it's being worked on by several of our city's departments. We have traffic, we have health, public works, and we're all working with, with Union Pacific in order to clean up this yard. It's, it's out there going toward the old Amigo Land Mall, which is now ITech. Now, this, right there, it's, it's still in progress. It was full of trees, small saplings, brush, so it, it was just unsightly, and we're, we're cleaning it up. And I, I believe the city is working also with the U.S. Border Patrol to maintain it once it's, it's clean and free of brush, because it is an issue to them as well. It, it provides harbor for, for illegal immigrants and, and drug traffic. So, that's a, a big improvement for District Four. I know that a lot of those warehouse owners there had, had that complaint. Next slide, please. Okay, this, this slide I, I decided to put in there because during my campaign, I was out there in, in San Pedro, which is, is part of, part of San Pedro is in, in the city limits, and the other half is, is within the county. One of their, their main concerns was transportation, because we don't have a, a city bus route going out to San Pedro. The reason being is that there isn't enough demand, and it's, it's, it's rather expensive getting a bus there to have one, one or two people, if, if any. So, while attending one of the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council meetings with, where our mayor serves as well, I talked to Tom Logan, who used to work for, for our, our bus system. He notified me of, of a route that Valley Metro does have for San Pedro. It shows here the stops. And also, another thing, if you want to go to the next slide, please? Tom told me that there's that 1-800 number on the bottom in the middle, and any resident can call and, and get picked up at, at no extra charge, just the regular rate. So, anytime you need service out there, you can, if it's not within the, the scheduled, I guess, the, the schedule, they drive by, you can call that number and they'll pick you up. So, that's another neat thing I, I, I thought I'd share with, with the residents out there. I believe that, that concludes the presentation. I know a lot of the projects that Commissioner Longoria mentioned, the, the ERA projects, a lot of them are in District, District Four. I, I realize some of them have been taking a long time, but like Rick said, they, they fall within the, the time allotted in the contract. The reason, the reason you see a lot of these projects that seem like they're complete, but they haven't been paved, is because the engineers are, are still testing the lines and making sure that the ground doesn't settle, so they won't have to go in there and tear up the, the street again. But they, they are working on them, they, they aren't forgotten, and hopefully, real soon, they'll, they'll pave them over. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, very good report. Proclamations, I think, are next. Estella?
Proclamations, Senior Patrol Officer Diana G. Martinez.
Wow. Not used to being on this side. Okay. This proclamation of the City of, okay, let me start again, I'm kind of nervous, it's getting weird over here. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas honoring Senior Patrol Officer Diana G. Martinez. Whereas Diana G. Martinez has been a member of the Brownsville Police Department since 1997, and has been a patrol officer since February 22nd, 2000, and is presently a Senior Patrol Officer with the Brownsville Police Department. I'm going to cry. Whereas, on June 30th, 2011, at about 6:30 PM, Senior Patrol Officer Diana G. Martinez was working her regular patrol shift when she got a call to respond to a situation on Five Belinda Circle. And whereas, Senior Patrol Officer Diana G. Martinez, upon arriving at Five Belinda Circle, discovered 11-year-old Luis Fernando Virial unconscious, showing no signs of life and apparently dead of accidental strangulation. I'm going to cry. The result of an adverse reaction to medication the young man was taking, and whereas, Senior Patrol Officer Diana G. Martinez immediately put her training to use and began resuscitation efforts to the unconscious youth, and was successful in obtaining a pulse to soon revive Luis Fernando. Whereas, because of her heroic lifesaving effort, Senior Patrol Diana G. Martinez, Luis Fernando Virial is alive and well, living the normal life of an 11-year-old. Whereas, Senior Patrol Officer Diana G. Martinez is recognized for her, for her heroic effort that has given a young man a second chance at life. In doing so, set an example that seeks well of her training and speaks well of the officers in the Brownsville Police Department. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in the charter said city, on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby honor and recognize Senior Patrol Officer Diana G. Martinez for her heroic lifesaving action, done on this fourth day of October, 2011.
I would like to thank Honorable Mayor and City Commission for recognizing me. However, I'm not going to sound like, I don't really look at myself as a hero, I was just going to my call. I'm not going to say it was an ordinary call, because it was not. I did take that call home with me that night, because I do have a little boy, almost the same age. But I do know that any other officer in my situation would have done just the same. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you on behalf of the city.
I also, I also want to add, I'm sorry for choking up, but it is an amazing, amazing, amazing story to have somebody that is revived from being deceased, and to know that our police officer hero, who I believe it's not even standard CPR training, immediately went into that mode and saved a life. And we need to remember that these officers are faced with a lot of hard decisions, but she did the right thing, and because of her, there is one more person walking the earth.
The second proclamation this evening is Texas Archaeological Month. Melissa, Commissioner?
Thank you very much.
Melissa, do you have a read or do you have a copy?
Okay. Most recently, our First Lady of Texas, Anita Perry, was here to recognize our community for being a historic treasure. We all know that history and our heritage defines a community, and it is through the efforts of our local organizations, like those before us today with the Palo Alto Battlefield National Historical Park, and the Historic Brownsville Museum, that we're able to shine throughout the community. So, with that, I'd like to read this proclamation, recognizing the Fifth Annual International Rio Grande Delta Archaeology Fair, that will showcase our area to our youth especially. So, I'm going to go ahead and read it. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing the Fifth Annual Rio Grande Delta International Archaeology Fair. Whereas, on October 8th, 2011, the Historic Brownsville Museum and the Palo Alto National Historic Site will co-host the Fifth Annual Rio Grande Delta International Archaeology Fair. And whereas, one goal of the fair is to provide the community with an opportunity to learn about archaeology and local archaeological resources, as well as to instill a sense of shared stewardship and the value of historic resource preservation. And whereas, as part of Texas Archaeology Month, this event will provide numerous educational stations designed for visitors of all ages, set up and staffed by personnel from local museums and educational facilities, as well as amateur and professional archaeologists from the U.S. and Mexico. And whereas, events such as this and others through Texas are designed to illustrate the depth and richness of our heritage, from the former dwelling sites of prehistoric hunters to ancient shipwrecks, Civil War sites, and the Palo Alto National Battlefield Site. And whereas, we all share collective ownership of our heritage, and also share in its preservation. And the ultimate goal of this fair is to create an awareness of this heritage and how to maintain it for future generations. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize the Fifth Annual Rio Grande Delta International Archaeology Fair. My goodness, that's a long name. Done this, the fourth day of October, 2011. Signed, the mayor and the city commission.
I would like to thank the mayor and the commission for recognizing the rich heritage of this area, and I would like to extend an invitation to everybody in Brownsville, and of course, the city commission as well, to, to come out and join us next Saturday for our fair. I think you might learn something, and you'll have some fun as well. Thank you again for the honor.
Mark, I, I do want to tell the audience, and, and we've spent some good time together about the national park, and we're going to do our very, very best to promote you, make sure that everybody realizes, not many towns that have a national park within their city limits. And Cameron County happens to have two national parks. So, we are very happy to have you here, and we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that we do all the things that you and I talked about, okay?
Really appreciate that, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation from the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art.
Mayor, I'm going to defer to Marcella Inojosa, the director of the Fine Arts Museum.
That looks like Bertha to me.
And, and company.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez and, and city commissioners. Yes, I am Bertha Garza, President of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts. And we're here with our board, Ann Marcella Inojosa, who is the director. So, I'd like for them to stand up, because we, I would like to recognize them. On behalf of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, we are here to extend our thanks, most of all, for the support that you all have given us throughout the years, but also to extend an invitation to our, the biggest fundraiser in the year, and this is Dali. And for that, I'm going to have the, the expert in the arts to explain, which is Marcella. This is a very special invitation that we're making to all of you. So, she's going to explain what we have done and what we're doing in this, this whole ordeal of Dali.
Welcome, Marcella.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. I'm really happy and very proud to be here on behalf of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art. I was here last year as committee chairman for the Franchuta Gala, inviting the commissioners. This year, I have the honor, on behalf of the board, to invite you all to our next gala. Our gala is a fifth anniversary gala, it's going to be a beautiful exhibit of Salvador Dali, and we have artworks of the Divine Comedy, it's an inspiration of Salvador Dali, Andante's Divine Comedy, I think you're going to enjoy. And 15 sculptures from the Museo Sumaya that are really going to make like something, it's monumental sculptures that are going to be here in our museum. I love what I'm, what I'm doing, beginning Beginning January, the board invited me to direct this museum as a volunteer. And since I started working, I've just enjoyed everything, because our mission stands out just incredibly. To educate and to promote culture in Brownsville to our community is just incredible. We have so much potential in fine arts that it really makes us proud. And just like we honor today our parks, we have beautiful education institutions and museums that make us proud, as you know. And this year, we wanted to briefly, just being here and remembering being here last year to right now, I just want to briefly tell you that we have really worked real hard to promote art. And especially, we brought in, since starting January, with the Frida Kahlo exhibit, more than 7,000 students to the museum. We've worked with UTB, with BISD, and with different universities from the Rio Grande Valley to work with this wonderful exhibit that we had the luck to have in Brownsville, which was Frida Kahlo. We ventured with other museums. We've worked really hard with our teachers in our community. And let me tell you, we have a lot of artists and a lot of really talented people in this community. What... all the seeds we're planting in this... in educating our children is just incredible. They're so enthusiastic into learning about art. A lot of our students have never been into an art institution or a fine arts institution. And I just had the pleasure of, well, we lack a little bit of staff, so I did some of the educational coordinating also with other volunteers from our board and from the museum. And we ventured, like I told you, with other institutions, like Texas A&amp;M, Pan American University. And we got the attention of a lot of museums all over the world. Frida was just a big asset for us to stand out as a museum in Brownsville. Also, we cannot forget our elderly. We had a lot of participation in the elderly coming into the museum from all the Rio Grande Valley, and they just enjoyed our beautiful institution. We had the summer art camp. We sponsored, thanks to the scholarship from different grants, that we had around 200 children that we could sponsor from the Buena Vista and from the Cameron County. And also mentioning that BISD is working with us hand by hand. Even though we might be... they might be having cuts in art, we're working together to promote more art programs in our community. We introduced also this year a summer music camp. This, thanks to different scholarships, we had... we had more than 120 students for music coming in. And as you know, fine arts is different manifestations of art, like music, theater, cinema arts, and different activities. We loved how the music camp brought in more children, but also how we brought in children from the community just around the museum. Music brings in people, brings in children and attracts them, attracts young people impressively. So we are in the vision to promote more scholarships in our museum. We have classes from Monday to Saturday for... in different ages. And definitely, we want to continue this summer music camp. This is all, like I told you, our mission is education, but we have all these ventures with our BISD middle and high school competitions, the 40th International Art Show, and the Student International Art Show, as well as the Congressional High School Art Competition and the BISD faculty exhibit. All this year, we've been working, but we are very proud to invite you to our fifth anniversary gala. This is our major fundraiser. Without this gala, we cannot open doors next year. And we are proud to have you this year. And I wanted to tell you also that, well, this is part of what's coming up, the big sculptures from Mexico, from the Fundación Carlos Slim. And we have a beautiful program. It's gonna be a wonderful Spanish night in honor of Salvador Dali. And we are gonna also recognize and have a program with music and Rey Duran as a performer, a flamenco dancer. And somebody also sponsored a presentation of two Spanish horses dancing in front of our museum. So I think it's gonna be a night to remember. We want you to be part of it, as well as we want you to be part of our museum. This museum is the people's museum. It's the future of our students and of educating students in art. And we want to keep on working and opening doors for the community. We have already next year's calendar lined up. As you know, we're keeping and promoting our educational programs and bonding in all our education. The BISD and universities are working together with the museum. But also, we are planning... we've been planning to celebrate the zoo for its 40th international... 40th celebration. We're bringing in sculpture, photography, paintings, and all the fine arts to commemorate, from May to September, a wonderful fine arts exhibit for the zoo in commemoration of its 40th anniversary. We already have next year's gala coming up, which is, we're fighting between Picasso and a wonderful Rodin sculpture exhibit that's coming also, that we just got news from. But we need the community's support. We have zero budget. We have a lot of... our board members are working real hard. We have a lot of new volunteers working, but we need the support of all the community, especially the city. We are very thankful, but we do want to ask you to upgrade or try to help us, because we are working just on...
Well, I'd like to interject that we are very grateful to have someone like Marcella on as a Director. This would not have been possible, because she has helped us and along with our wonderful board that is working very diligently to make things happen, to volunteer, to give all their expertise to museum that is very well needed and very much needed in our community to uplift the level of our community. Marcella, with her connections, with her partners, she's been able to build partners throughout, within the city and out of the city. And we are becoming the entryway to the United States through art. And so I give my thanks to Marcella, because she has passionately dedicated her time and effort as a volunteer. And she has given us an example as to what can be done by volunteering your knowledge. So I want to thank Marcella, and I want to give her a very big round of applause for her efforts. And her leadership, because it has been her leadership and our boards, because our board is really working together to make this happen. This doesn't happen just because. It's a lot of hours, a lot of time. If you ever have the opportunity to go in there and have her give you a little tour, take your kids, while tour of an exhibition, you'll get out of there, you know, a better person, having learned a lot more. Now, this is our expense for 2010. This is salaries, very limited salaries. All the expenditures are... the biggest there that you all can see is the mortgage. And we have a $640,000 mortgage that we're... it's very difficult to overcome. And so with maintaining the expenses, we need all the help we can get. And so, but here today is just to give you a view of what we're doing with practically a zero budget. So this is... we want you all to really look at that. Our museum is part of the new revitalization for downtown. It's the entryway right there as you come in. So we ask you that to reconsider, you know, the way we need to maintain this building and this going on. We have to continue, because we can't go back. We have to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bertha. Thank you, Marcella. I do personally, and on behalf of the City Commission, thank you very, very much. I happen to have gone to all your exhibits. I've been to your competitions. I'm totally in love with the fine arts. So we'll try our very best. And like I said, I... with Pete's help, who doesn't like to give me any money, you know, we're trying to see every which way that we can possibly figure out other revenue sources, other revenue streams. I know I sit over there in the PUB, and you all gave a fine presentation at that meeting as well. Don't give up on us. We won't give up on you. And we'll do our very best to do the best that we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Employee of the Month.
Mr. Manager, I think you have one more. Employee of the Month.
Our 10th Employee of the Month for this year. And please help me welcome Hawk Scott from our Parks Department. Most of you... I'm sorry. I think we got our two tallest employees here today. Mark. I think any... all of you that have any tenure with the City of Brownsville have met Hawk and all the events that we have had throughout the city. He is a wonderful asset to our... not just our Parks Department, but our city. In any and all cases where we need someone to work on a weekend or things like that, when he's scheduled to be off, he's out there with us all the time. Never says no, never heard him say no to us. And as a result, our mission and our events work very well and go successfully. And we have had a lot of events over the last few years and still more coming. So we're gonna need him to continue his new reputation of being Employee of the Month. And the fact of the matter is, he's gonna have to continue to work and help us out. He is a Parks Manager. He's got 30 people under him. He graduated from the University of Texas at Brownsville and immediately started working for us after we... after we found out he graduated and we understood he could read and write and things like that. We really wanted him here. So as you can see, he is a kid at heart, and he fit well in with the Parks Department. He fits in well with the kids. In fact, a few months ago, we sent him on a trip with a lot of our Little Leaguers. And he drove them all the way to their destination and brought them all the way back. And the kids still call and ask for him. So he is very, very well-liked and respected by all the departments, by our utility companies and all the entities we work with throughout the city. And he's trying his best to be serious here. As Employee of the Month, he gets the plaque. Hawk Scott. Employee of the Month, or... yes. It's easier to spell his name. Employee of the Month pin. He gets a watch. Not that he needs it, he's always on time.
Dodger's?
It's not a Dodger, no.
It's not a Dodger watch.
And of course, he's eligible for the Employee of the Year at our banquet in December. So congratulations, Hawk.
Hello?
Yeah, you got it?
I mean, I don't know what to say, but I mean... I mean, thank you. I mean, honestly, to me, I really don't deserve something like this, because to me, I'd rather accept this award for the Parks and Recreation Department, because I really do have a really great staff that have been here long. And as well as all the other city staffs, I see a lot of people here, you know, Santana, Carlos, Oscar, Pete, Saucy, Chief Garcia. I mean, they've all been... I mean, with the Parks have been outstanding. And City Commissioners, I see you guys out there. Melissa, Rick, St. John, Jessica. I mean, thank you, guys. I mean, that's all I can really say. And to the... just, I mean, I don't know what to say. I mean, this is very humbling. And to my aunt who's here, I mean, it's really nice to have family here, because, I mean, my immediate family's in El Paso. So, I mean, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. Thank you. That's wonderful. Keep up the good work. And I see Santana back there. I saw the letter at the Brownsville Herald this week congratulating Santana also. So my congratulations to you. Item number five.
Item number five, Consent Agenda Items A through G.
Understood.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain from voting on these items.
Okay. Abstaining from voting would be Estella Vazquez, Commissioner. Motion carries.
Item six. Consideration in action to appoint one member and reappoint one member to the Civil Service Commission.
Mayor, members of the commission, I would request that we reappoint Andy Vega to the Civil Service Commission. Captain Ruben Garcia, retired Captain Ruben Garcia, has decided to not be reappointed and resigned. And I did send a resume on a viable candidate, Maria Lidia Gonzalez, who worked for the city for 34 years. She was a Human Resource Director for the last eight years that she was here in our city. She would acknowledge and request to serve if so approved by the commission.
Mayor, I vote to reappoint Andy Vega and to also... to reappoint Andy Vega and to appoint Lidia Gonzalez, Maria Lidia Gonzalez, as our new member on the Civil Service Board.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And may I add, the third member is Mr. Santiago Galárez, but he is not up for reappointment until this...
All right, thank you.
Item seven. Consideration in action to appoint a City Commissioner to the Paseo de la Resaca Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District.
I move to appoint Estella Chavez-Vazquez.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, public comment. There's one public comment, Mr. Roberto Resti. Item nine?
Item, go ahead.
Consideration in Action Regarding the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation's Fiscal Year 2012 Budget.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, this is the workshop that I gave earlier regarding the budget for fiscal year 2012 for the B C I C.
Okay. This is the action item that we had our workshop on this earlier today. Do I hear a motion?
Want to approve the B C I C's budget for the next fiscal year?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Doctor.
Delina, the individual projects, people soliciting some funds, are those going to come before us, too? The individual?
Yes, Commissioner. Typically, what happens is the applications come into the B C I C Board. The B C I C Board reviews them. Once we go through the public hearing process, the Board makes recommendations and they do come to the City Commission for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Delina. Number ten?
Item ten, Consideration in Action to Authorize the Transit Advisory Committee to Implement an Annual Fundraising Sponsorship Event.
Hello, Norma. How are you?
Hello. Good afternoon, good evening. Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this item was brought to you before the last City Commission meeting and it was table pending the policies and procedures for the fundraising committee. And we have attached those policies and procedures. They have been reviewed by the City Attorney's Office and we are respectfully requesting your authorization.
Do I hear a motion?
So, move and second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Norma.
Thank you.
Item eleven, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2011-062 to Request Financial Assistance from the Texas Water Development Board for the Construction of Additional Sewer Infrastructure and First-Time Sewer Services to the residents of the Villanueva Colonial Project Areas and to Authorize the Financial Advisors, Bond Counsel, and Engineers to Coordinate the Submission of the Application to the Texas Water Development Board and Other Matters in Connection therewith.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, item eleven through fourteen are basically the same, it's just two different projects. One is Villanueva and the other one is 511-803. But David Avigil with P U B, project manager with P U B, is here with me. Basically, this project, or what we're asking through these resolutions is two things. One, is that P U B is gonna go to the Texas Water Development Board to extend sewer service to two colonias, Villanueva and the residents along 511-802. And basically, part of the requirements to the Texas Water Development Board is that we require this resolution because they, the Water Development Board will give them money, grant them money, but also some of it may be part of a loan. They're pledging the sewer fees, once they extend the sewer service and people hook up, they're pledging the sewer fees collected from these residents to pay back any possible loans. So, that's basically, in summary, of the first resolution. The second resolution is a P U B resolution, just asking the City Commission Authority to pursue this grant or loan from the Texas Water Development Board. So, Estella, I believe you need to read each item individually?
Yes, I can just go ahead and read each one all the way through.
Okay, and then one action to cover all?
It's gonna be items eleven through fourteen? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and read the other.
Item twelve, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2011-063 to Authorize the Filing of an Application to the Texas Water Development Board for Financial Assistance for the Villanueva Sanitary Sewer Project. Item thirteen, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2011-064 to Request Financial Assistance from the Texas Water Development Board for the Construction of Additional Sewer Infrastructure and First-Time Sewer Services to the Residents of the FM 511-802 Colonial Project Areas and to Authorize the Financial Advisors, Bond Counsel, and Engineers to Coordinate the Submission of the Application to the Texas Water Development Board and Other Matters in Connection therewith. Item fourteen, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2011-065 to Authorize the Filing of an Application with the Texas Water Development Board for Financial Assistance for the FM 511-802 Colonial Project.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve items eleven through fourteen. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Are we gonna listen to any part of the presentation?
I'm sorry?
Are we gonna listen to any part of the presentation? Or we're just gonna?
Do you want the additional?
This is resolutions.
I'm sorry, the, I'm so sorry. Sorry. That's one.
Okay. Unless I hear a nay, the motion carries. Item number fifteen?
Item fifteen, Consideration in Action to Authorize the Donation of Armored Vests from the Brownsville Police Department to the City of Elsa Police Department.
Mayor, Mayor, and Members of City Commission, good evening. The City of Elsa made a request to us in regards to donating any surplus armored vests that we have. We do have some that are surplus. These are vests that are no longer utilized by officers because after the wear, after five years, N I G standards recommends that these vests be replaced. Normally, we don't auction these vests off because we don't want them to fall into the hands of certain individuals, especially criminal organizations or individuals. So, normally, we keep them and we use them for training purposes. But when an opportunity comes around that a city like the City of Elsa does not have the means to be able to purchase vests for their officers, then we're willing to donate them, as long as the City Commission approves.
And they're still effective?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Otherwise, I don't think I wanna work for Elsa.
Y'all need something, let me know.
No, just, no, no. Do I hear a motion?
So, move?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item sixteen, Consideration in Action to Authorize the Acceptance and Expenditure of the Texas Department of Transportation's Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Comprehensive Grant Awarded to the Brownsville Police Department in the Amount of $82,708.17 for Fiscal Year 2012.
Mayor, Members of City Commission, Texas Act is awarded as a step grant in the amount of $82,708.17. The portion that is actual reimbursement part from Texas Act is $52,726.40. Our matching portion is $16,176.47 from our forfeiture account, $8,195.30 that are made up by in-kind contributions regarding, because of positions that already exist and the work that has to be done, or is being done actually, by a sergeant and accountant and administrative secretary. And then, of course, is already funded through city budget. And also mileage per diem in regards of the vehicles that we use daily for step purposes. So, this is money that's already allocated. And any portion that we have to match comes from our P D forfeiture account.
Want to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item seventeen, Consideration in Action to Award a Contract for Operation Management Services for the Recycling Center of the City of Brownsville.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, it is intent of the City of Brownsville to award a contract to provide operation management services for the Brownsville Recycling Center located at 308 East Elizabeth Street in order to meet the environmental and health codes affecting the city's environment as well as to expand recycling services throughout the city by placing recycling bins or containers in strategic locations and for special events to implement a recycling program to educate our community. Therefore, staff recommendation is to award a contract, thank you, for operation management services for the recycling center of the City of Brownsville to E S D Ecology Services and Dispositions Incorporated of Almeto, Texas, based upon the attached agreement. Now, this contract will occupy the premises on 308 East Elizabeth downtown without a payment or a rent. Now, the contractor shall provide and pay for all required utilities and telephone services. The city shall maintain the existing telephone number for the premises, but limited to a number for local use. And the contractor shall provide additional strategic drop-off locations with containers to assist the city to dispose of recyclable items as well as to provide shredding of documentation, which is certified document destruction, for all city departments at no cost to the city. And also to provide special recycling containers throughout city offices to collect bottle, plastic bottles, aluminum cans, paper, and so on. This term should be for two years, commencing October the first, or, you know, right after this meeting. And shall expire on September 30th, 2013, with three additional years if the city and the contractor agrees to that. Such notice to, should be given, no more than ninety days prior to the end of the primary term. And the city shall, after the contract gives such notice to extend, should have thirty days to notify the contractor of its agreement. So, the Evaluation Committee concurs with this recommendation. And I have the representative from E S D Recycling, if there's any questions.
I have some questions for her.
Yes, ma'am.
The first question pertains to complaints. I've received emails, phone calls, and I have an office a few blocks away from the Elizabeth location. And the emails, phone calls, et cetera, pertain to maintenance and hours of operation. Either the facility is dirty or they're not keeping the hours it's supposed to be keeping. So, how are we addressing that in this new contract?
It is, if you look on your agenda, on the pages right after the procurement analysis, you will see that under the agreement, it's under section, is the attachment, the exhibit, that it's right after page seven of the agreement, under the scope of services, there's the hours of operations from Mondays to Fridays, from eight to 5:00 P. M. and on Saturdays, at least for half a day. And then, as necessary, if there's any special, if there's any special, let me see where it's.
Okay, who can people call to complain?
I'm sorry?
Who can people call?
Okay, there's a number, there's a number to the recycling side and there's another number to public works. And there's always a number to City Hall when there's people that wants to complain about the hours of operation. You gotta understand also, we had a few issues last year and at the beginning of the year where there were complaints about the site on Elizabeth having trash everywhere. The thing is, at night, people around the neighborhood, when their containers are full, they go and they drop, or they throw the bags at the recycling center, thinking that, you know, it's a trash place, not a recycling place. Those are some of the complaints we have. But we've been trying to address those complaints.
Okay. And did our review committee try to negotiate, as far as the revenue this individual is making, did we try to acquire a certain percentage? Is there any way that we're making any rental income off of this? I know they're doing the city a service by providing recycling services for the community. But at the same time, I know that this company is most likely making money. So, how is the city benefiting from that?
We approached, we approached, this is what we did during the evaluation process, we had a presentation for, from E S D Recycling Center and also from Brownsville Scrap Paper. E S D Recycling happens to be the highest-ranked firm. So, when we negotiated with them, we approached them with trying to get something back. The thing is, in the past, we used to pay Allied Waste to manage the location on Elizabeth Street. As it is right now, we're saving money by having E S D at no cost. We don't, they don't pay rent, okay, but we also don't pay them to manage that location. But that's not only what they do, they also have locations throughout the city to help alleviate this drop-off location on Elizabeth. Now, to answer your question on the rates, and I have, and I have the representative from E S D Recycling, they're saying that sometimes it's so hard to make up for the cost associated with transporting all those recyclables to be, to be, how do you call it, to the main location. And then, they have, they have to, for example, the plastic bottles, they have to process them, and then they have to resell them. They have to wait until it's the right time for that particular commodity to be out for sale. So, what they're saying is, it's so hard right now in the market to make a profit to be able to pay us back. And I have the representative to give us an explanation on that. And I know we approached the other company, they have the same issue.
Hello.
Hello.
Commissioner, you have question?
The same questions I posed.
The question is on the, out of your product, how come we don't get anything matched?
Okay. The process, it is very expensive. I am not sure if you are familiar with recycling process. We need injection molding machines, we need grinders, we need shredders, we need balers, we need densifiers, we need compactors, we need electricity, labor, diesel, insurance. Believe me, it had tremendous cost. I've been doing this for my last twenty-six years. And as Mr. Luna said, you used to pay, the city used to pay between, I believe, six, seven thousand dollars cost. And I'm not charging any cost. I'm not doing that much profits right now, but my company is doing another type of services and that's how we survive.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
The term of the contract is for two years. Would you all consider doing it less? In other words, we, there has been certain complaints that I think some of us have received with regards to the premises and the hours of operation. And I personally haven't had a chance to really had an opportunity to visit with anybody with that regard, but Commissioner, as I wonder, brings up a good point. Would you all consider a term less than the two years?
No, not at this moment. And let me tell you, complaints, it was last year, because the way that somebody changed the walls or the fence, we, they make us, as a matter of fact, it wasn't a decision of E S D, somebody designed an outside door container. And that's why all the trash and all the accumulation was. Believe me, the mistake, we fixed the mistake, we don't have that much complaint anymore.
My office is about three blocks away from there, so I see it every day.
Yeah. We have a lot of good people who give good comments and we have bad people or people from the community. Believe me, in twenty-six years of experience trying to change the culture of Brownsville, believe me, I still not believe that, I'm putting all my efforts and I still have pretty bad comments. But it's the culture of the people. It's a change.
I recognize the work you're doing and I think you're doing a very good job.
Thank you very much.
You are appreciated.
Thank you.
And the primary term, at the end of the primary term, we're gonna come back and if there's any negotiations that we have, I mean, that we can negotiate any agreements, there's a clause in there about the ninety days. we can, we can negotiate any, any agreements, there's a clause in there about the 90 days if, if it's necessary, okay? And the, it, it is attached to, to, to the agenda, so.
That's what I was worried about, Robert. I, I see it's a two-year with the opportunity to renew it for three years, but I, I think there are some issues, and I realize a young lady who says that it's the culture of Brownsville, but they, there's also issues on the other side. This is, this is, this is two different sides to this story, and I, I want to be able to have the opportunity to have a little bit more negotiation flexibility here.
All right.
Okay.
Would approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
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 Motion doesn't carry. Thank you.
Item 18, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of motor fuels for the City of Brownsville.
Staff recommendation is to award a term contract for the purchase, the lea- and delivery of motor fuels for the City of Brownsville. There's three contractors, we went out for bids, and we got, we're gonna, we're gonna split the contract between three companies. The first one is gonna be Gold Star Petroleum out of San Juan, Texas, the low responsible bidder, at the stipulated margin prices for service, the fire station number three, number six, number seven, number eight, and number nine. And the Brownsville Gulf Center, the landfill, and the airport maintenance yard. And there's, what, what they do is, they, they, we use the, the price of the fuel on the day of delivery, and then they have their markup. The markup, it's, it's attached on the tabulation. The second one is to award a contract for purchase and delivery of motor fuels for the City of Brownsville to Oil Patch Fuel and Supplies of Brownsville, Texas, the low responsible bidder, and this is gonna be for the bus fueling facility. It's gonna be for the Brownsville Police Department, and it's also gonna be for the Public Works Yard, and it's gonna be for diesel fuel only. The third one is gonna be to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of motor fuels for the City of Brownsville to Mansfield Oil Company of Gainesville, Georgia, the low responsible bidder, who, who will service the Public Works Yard, and this is gonna be for the unleaded fuel, and it's based on the margins stipulated on the tab sheet. The contract shall commence upon award by City Commission and shall expire September 30th, 2012 with the, with the option to extend for two additional years. Funding for this project will be derived from the operating budget from each user department.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 19, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of mosquito control products for the Brownsville Public Health Department.
Staff recommendation is to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of mosquito control products to be used by the Public Health Department and other city departments. And this is to award a contract for the 4.0 plus 4.0 ULB to Adapco of Stanford, Florida, the low responsible bidder, at twenty dollars and ninety-five cents per gallon. This contract shall commence upon award by City Commission and shall expire September 30th, 2012. And they have an option to extend for an additional two years. Fund, this funding for this procurement is available from fund number 532-708.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 20, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of computer equipment to be used at the new public computer center at Brownsville Public Main Library.
This procurement, it's on the, it's under section 781.025 of the, under contracts and purchases under the local, Texas Local Government Code for bidding require, the bidding requirement has been already satisfied by the Texas Local Government Code under purchasing of cooperative agreement. And this is for the information of, the Department of Information Resources. Staff recommends to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of computer equipment to be used at the new public computer center at the Brownsville Public Library, that's the main library. And that's going to Dell Marketing LP of Austin, Texas, in the amount of a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Now, this procurement reflects the DIR pricing. Funding is available 70% under ERA funding, and there's a matching of 30% that, that is coming out of account 150-7497-8382. And the administration of the Public Library Department concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item 21, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of ground maintenance equipment for the Brownsville Parks and Recreation Department.
This is also another procurement under section 781.025 of the Local Government Code, but this is under BIBOR. That's under TASB, the Texas Association of School Boards. And this is, this is for the, to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of grounds maintenance equipment, which is four wheeling mowers, John Deere's, for the, for the Brownsville Parks and Recreation Department to News House Company Incorporated out of Brownsville, Texas, in the amount of fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. Funding is available for this procurement from the city account 45-512-942. And the administration of the Parks Department concurs with this recommendation.
Motion.
Motion approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 22, consideration in action to award a contract for a congestion management study for the Brownsville Metropolitan Planning Organization.
This procurement, it's, well, it is intent of the City of Brownsville to hire a consultant to do traffic congestion management study, and this is to be used by the Metropolitan Planning Organization or the NPO. Staff recommendation is to award a contract for a congestion management study for the Metropolitan Planning Organization to Jacobs Engineering Group of Dallas, Texas, in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred dollars. This contract shall commence upon award by City Commission and shall expire May 31st, 2012. Funding for this procurement, it's available from the Texas Department of Transportation line item under Professional Services Account 01614-765. The administration of the Planning Department concurs with this recommendation as well as the NPO. And there's a representative from the NPO if you have any questions.
Mr. Lund. Good to have you here. Mark. I hear a motion.
Move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 23, consideration in action to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of type D hot mix for the Brownsville Public Works Department.
Staff recommendation is to award a, a term contract for the purchase of type D hot mix, which is the asphalt that you see on the streets. And this is, this is the, we broke it down into the primary and the secondary vendor. The primary will be from Teta Materials Incorporated out of Elsa, Texas, the low responsible bidder, for fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents per ton for the type D hot mix with limestone, and fifty-nine point ninety-five per ton on the type D with gravel. And this is, this will be coming out of the, the 511 plant. The secondary contract will be going to Upper Valley Materials out of Mission, Texas, and they have seventy-two dollars per ton on the type D hot mix with limestone, and seventy dollars per ton on the type D hot mix with gravel. This is coming out of the San Benito Plant. This contract shall commence upon award by City Commission and shall expire September 30th, 2012 with the option to extend for two additional years. And the city will allow the supplier to adjust established contract prices due to inflation and/or increased operating costs. There's information on the, on the, on the, on the analysis. And this is based on the CPI or the Labor Consumers Price Index, okay? Funding for these contracts will be derived from General Fund Account 01417-743 and CO Fund Account 82417-743. The administration of the Public Works Department concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 24, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of limestone for the Brownsville Public Works Department.
Staff recommends to award a contract for purchase and delivery of limestone. This is the base cover materials used for paving the streets also. This is going to Balkan Materials Company out of Brownsville, Texas, the low responsible bidder, and it is thirty-five dollars and fifteen cents per cubic yard or nineteen dollars per, per ton. Now, there's a maximum dry density that it's attached in the, in the package. They have a 1.73 dry ton per cubic yard, so there's a formula. This contract shall be approved, shall commence upon approval by City Commission and shall expire November 30th, 2012 with two additional two-year extensions, and it has the same language as the previous contract. If there's any, any increases in, in price, delivery of this material shall occur on, as a needed, on a, as needed basis, I'm sorry, and will be coordinated through the Public Works Department. Funding for this project or for this, this commodity, it's available from the General Fund 01417-743 and Fund 82417-743. The administration of Public Works concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 25, consideration in action to award a term contract for the purchase and delivery of herbicide for the Brownsville Public Works Department.
Staff recommends to award a contract for the, this is a term contract, I'm sorry, for the purchase and delivery of herbicide to be used by the Public Works Department, Green Division, and any other department if necessary. This is going to Red River Specialties Incorporated out of Comfort, Texas, the low responsible bidder, at fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents per gallon. This contract, the same as the other ones, it, it shall commence upon award by City Commission and shall expire September 30th, 2012 as a primary term with two additional extensions of one year each. Funding for this procurement is available from Fund 44 Accounts 424-708 and 425-708. And, oh, and there's another one, 529-708. And the administration of Public Works concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 26, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of a cab and chassis truck for the Brownsville Public Works Department.
Staff recommends to award a contract for purchase and delivery of a cab and chassis truck with a 14-foot steel-mounted flatbed for the Brownsville Public Works Department for a new 2012 model 4F-550 for the Brownsville Public Works Department to Tipton Ford of Brownsville, Texas, the low responsible bidder, in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Funding for this project is available from Fund 44 Account 415-943. Administration of Public Works concurs with this recommendation.
Would approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, right before I do, can I just make a real quick message on TV?
Sure.
I missed my daughter's open house because we were at City Commission, and I'm proud to say that, you know, she made the Aon role, so I want to congratulate my daughter, Franca Longoria, on her Aon role and all of her successes. And would adjourn.
Well, I congratulate you as a father.
Thank you.
I missed mine too, but I don't think he's on the Aon role.
Anyway, motion to adjourn, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.